We are recording.
Right. Okay, well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 5th, 2021 meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. We have a quorum of five members, so I'll call this meeting to order. I think that every, Peter, you might want to add a PB in front of your name for Planning Board. And before we proceed, we're gonna have Ryan Hension, who's filling in for Jean Gatzit tonight. Thank you so much for being here, Ryan. Fill us in on the, the way that we do virtual engagement and the rules of participation. So take it away, Ryan.
Absolutely. Sounds good. Thank you all for being here this evening. And you know that it's a large shoes to fill in for the terrific gene. So I'll do my best here and let me bring up our guidelines here. And we'll make this full screen. And so as you may know, the city has engaged with key members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive sort of conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for key members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. More about this vision and the full room's rules of decorum. We found that participate in city council meeting page and this website here. And following our examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder V I S code and other guidelines that support this vision to be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony during open comment and public hearing shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participants make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Absurdity, dehumanizing language, racial attacks, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting prohibited. And participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. Individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. And currently only, only audio testimony is permitted online.
Well, thank you so much, Ryan, for that. And with that, I guess we'll then move into the next section of our agenda. So we don't have any minutes to review tonight, so we'll go on to public participation. This is the time where members of the public can address the board on any subject for three minutes. The only thing that we can't have comment on it in this meeting are the items that we're having public hearings on later. So we have two items tonight. One is for the Velo Condos Use Review Extension, and one is for the Stanford Court Affordable Senior Housing Site Review. So if you have comments for either Velo or Stanford, please hold off. And when that item comes up, we'll have a special public hearing on that. So otherwise, I'm going to be looking at the attendee list and looking for hands to raise and see if we have anybody who would like to speak to us. And so far, I only see three attendees from the public on, and I don't see any raised hands yet. I'll give people one more moment here. Oh, I think I see a raised hand. So Lynn, I'm probably Lynn Siegel, I would guess. I'll have Ryan unmute you and allow you to unmute, and then you can address us.
All right. And Lynn, I'll go ahead and set the timer here. And we'll have little signs here for 30 seconds and to wrap up here. And let me go ahead and get our timer set and unmute here. All right, Lynn, able to unmute in your three minutes begin?
Yeah. I guess I'm gonna say the same boring thing that I always say, and that is like, stop growing so much. I can tell you today, I've been on the phone all day. Every single agency that I try to talk to, governmental or anything else, it's on hold, they're understaffed, they can't call you back, they don't call you back. There's, we are overpopulated. That's what it's about. We can't have all of this new condos on every corner. It's just not sustainable. I mean, I'd like to have an interactive with you about this because I don't get it. Your decisions, even considering CU South, is astounding. It's not anything that we consider growing this town with another university. Another university needs another town. It's like I'm seeing like in the rearview mirror, the whole thing is crashing, you know? And it's like I'm seeing it frame by frame. And it's excruciating to watch every decision made by Planning Board that subsidizes the developer, gives them a third story, gives them so much that they want. And mostly doesn't attribute to them the impact of what they have. I went on the Open Space Board of Trustees walk last night up with Anemone Trail and all the work they're doing. They're putting a helicopter up there to carry rocks to make steps. How each step and how they have to develop the trail with ups and downs so that the water doesn't run through and ruin the trail. All the expense that goes into our open space and mountain parks that each person contributes to in Boulder. Each extra person from each extra development, from each extra affordable housing development. Those are all people that use all of these things in Boulder that we have no money for. So why are we allowing this to continue like this? Why? I beg you. We haven't got the money to do it as it is. I am very conservative in the way I spend my money. I don't see the city as conservative at all, at all. And they're throwing fuel on the fire right and left. Ride your bike around, you know, like, I don't want to tell you what to do, but drive your car, whatever. Look around Boulder. It's not Boulder anymore, you know? My dad was here in 1950 and said the population was too high. Slow down. Stop. This is making it so, so many people are gonna suffer so much. Why do that?
Thank you, Lynn. The time is up, but I thank you so much for those comments. All right, so I don't see any other hands up for the general public comment. Give it five more seconds, and if I don't see a hand, then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. So the next item, 3A, is a call-up item. Use review for case number LUR 2021-21 for a 2,451 square foot event space, the niche event space with a 299 square foot patio at 4,571 Broadway. And hours of operation are proposed to be 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. seven days a week. And it's located in BMS zoning district. So this call-up expires tonight. Is there anyone on Planning Board who has any questions about this or has any, would like to call it up? Okay, seeing none, then we won't be calling that one up. And we'll go ahead and go on then to our first public hearing item. So our first public hearing tonight is a request to extend the approval of Use Review Application Number LUR 2016-20 for residential use in industrial zoning district located at 3289 Airport Road. Construction's been completed on the first three of five buildings, and the applicant has presold 50% of the units. The building permits are issued for the final two buildings with construction expected to begin at the end of 2021. This is a quasi-judicial review. Before we start the item, I'd like to ask the board if there are any any potential conflicts of interest or ex parte communication anyone would like to disclose. John?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I went out and bicycled around the project to get a better idea of it, but I don't view that as as anything that would prevent me from giving a fair and objective opinion on this.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else have anything? All right. Okay, well, with that, then we will be having a staff presentation followed by an applicant presentation. So I'll hand it over to, I guess, Charles and Elaine.
Thanks so much. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Elaine McGlocklin, our senior planner, will present staff analysis tonight. She actually served as the case manager a few years ago when the use review was originally approved. So we have some brief remarks that we'll be making, then we'll turn it over to the applicant. So Elaine, take it away.
Good. Thanks, Charles. Good evening, everyone. Just a few brief slides for this case. For this evening, the applicant's requesting a planning board level extension on the development agreement for the use review approval for residential and industrial. Just a quick process slide. The application process began in 2016, and then the use review for residential and industrial was unanimously approved in February of 2017. There was an ownership change in 2018 to the current owners, Thistle Communities, and technical documents were submitted the end of 2018 and then subsequently approved after several rounds of review at the end of 2019. Building permits were prepared in the beginning of 2020, just as COVID restrictions began. The applicant applied for two staff level extensions of six months each during 2020, and then the building permits were issued earlier this year. And since that time, construction was initiated. The applicant's request for extensions came up, and it was noted that they experienced some challenges related to COVID that we'll talk a little bit about. And so essentially, what they need at this point to finalize their construction is planning board approval. And just to orient us to this, it's on Airport Road just north of Belmont. It's about 2.7 acres. Its surrounding uses include small agri drone business to the north. There's the Vista Village Mobile Home Park. Just to the west, Boulder County Jail and Addiction Recovery Center is across Airport Boulevard, and then Belmont Bike Parks further to the south. So the approved site review was 470 attached and for sale residential units of various sizes and include five live-work units, 14 onsite permanently affordable units, along with a small micro-market space, shared common open spaces, and a trail that circumnavigates around the site. And so as you can see today, the applicants completed three of the five buildings. 22 of the 40 built are under contract. So it's those two northernmost buildings off to the left of the screen that still need to get completed, and construction's expected to begin soon. They've had their building permits issued. Then there's essentially three criteria to complete approval of an extension. And in terms of criteria for demonstrating good cause and actually starting with reasonable diligence, the applicant completed tech docs, as I noted, and the building permit process. So because essentially it's an unfinished project with a lot of construction still to complete, it demonstrates reasonable diligence towards completing this. And then for criteria for good cause, the applicant did go through a purchase from a different property owner, and then they restructured some of the financing and contracts to for-sale units rather than the rentals. And that includes onsite affordable units for sale. And then also, it's important to note that in our pretty much unprecedented past year and a half, there have been some challenges due to COVID-19 that include construction supply and subcontractor availability that occurred during the shutdown. So there is also a criteria for adding additional conditions. Staff notes that since the use review approval, there's no use review criteria that were added or changed that could impact the application. And then any additional conditions based on the criteria could possibly add some expenses that could jeopardize viability of this onsite affordable and for-sale project. So with that, staff finds the project remains consistent with the use review criteria and suggests not imposing any additional conditions. We have a motion for Planning Board's consideration, and I'm happy to consider any questions.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. That was pretty straightforward. So anybody have questions for Elaine on this one? Did I, did I see somewhere that maybe the original amount was 12 months? And then we cited on a 24-month, which makes sense.
That's, that's a good point of clarification. The applicant and I had a discussion this afternoon, and she suggested 24 months just so we don't have to revisit this again.
Yeah, I kind of, I wrote that down in my notes. Should we do that? Just so it gives a little more flexibility. Okay. Any other, no questions other than, oh, Lupita?
Yes, just to be clear, the way I understood it is that this is just a procedural thing because the, the two extensions have been exhausted, and therefore the only thing next to do and as we continue to deal with the pandemic and all the challenges associated with it, is come to the board.
Correct.
And so, and now the latest development is just that instead of being a one-year extension or two-year, I will be, I was thinking that just, just to be prepared, that I'm glad that that happened. I think it'd be wise. So good.
Thank you. Hello, did you wanna?
Yeah, the, the way the code is actually been interpreted, it doesn't talk directly about how long an extension should be granted. So historically, it's been interpreted that it's a three-year extension that you're looking at. And that's how I would recommend that you consider it today as well.
Okay, great. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, then I, I see Mary Duvall is on, from, from the applicant side, or did you want to kick this off, Mary?
Sure. I just wanted to, I thought you guys might like to know a little bit about some of the affordable buyers and what's motivating them and how excited they are to be able to buy their first home in Boulder. So we have six homes that are permanently affordable. They're one-bedroom condominiums. The square footage is about 700 square feet, and the price point on those is set by the city, as you probably know, and they're selling for about $158,000. So it's a, it's a great value for people that are, are looking to purchase their, their first home. We had 25 applicants and were able to go with the first six chosen in the lottery. Of those six, there are nurse, a nurse, a teacher, accounting employee, and a couple of people from CU, and then one elderly woman with family here. And then we also have three people that are giving up their commute to be able to live where they already work in Boulder, so that's exciting. And three people who are first-time homebuyers and are giving up renting to, to actually have some of the benefits of homeownership. And they're really excited, and the other buyers are also excited. The project's been developed to be attainable to people who don't make a lot of money. And so we're excited to bring this. This will be Thistle's fourth mixed-income homeownership community that we've developed over the last few years. And we really appreciate your consideration for the extension.
Great, thanks, Mary. All right, are many questions for Mary or the Thistle folks? Georgie?
Yeah, Mary, I'm just kind of curious. Thank you for giving us information on the affordable buyers. That's great. What, just out of curiosity, the rest of the development, what is it selling for? What's the unit mix? And you said about 50% pre-sold. Just cur, just out of curiosity more than anything else.
The unit mix is primarily one-bedrooms. There are some two-bedrooms, and then by the, by our use review, we put in five live-work units out there as well. And so those are mostly two-bedrooms. There's one three-bedroom out there. In the subsequent building, we have more two-bedrooms. And the price points in this round are from about $400,000 to $700,000.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, any other questions? All right. Well, okay, so we're moving right along. Yeah, for me, it was, I'll just say it's interesting to have this come in front of us because I think the site review was right before I joined the planning board. So I've learned, finally got a chance to learn a little bit more about, about this project. So kind of interesting. So with that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We would open it up to members of the community to speak on this, on, on this particular item. People will have three minutes to comment using the rules of engagement that Ryan gave us earlier in the meeting. And Ryan will hold up his cards when we get to the, near the three-minute mark. Are there any attendees who would like to raise their hand for a public comment on this hearing item? I'm not seeing, oh, I see Caitlin Ryan. So Ryan Hension, if you could.
All right, Caitlin, you're able to turn on your mic and unmute yourself. And you're, let's begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Caitlin, we can hear you.
Great. And is this for the Stanford Court?
Oh, no, this one is, right now, we're on the, the Velo Development out on Airport Road. So if you're here to speak for Stanford, it's gonna be a few more minutes.
I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands. So with that, if we don't have any more hands, I'll go ahead and close. Well, I'll first of all, assume that the applicant doesn't have any need for rebuttal since we didn't have any public comment from anyone. So unless somebody wants to say something additional, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And open it up to the board to talk about basically any, does it, well, first of all, I'll just do a negative poll. Does anybody have any issues with, with approving this extension of the use review? Seen the negative poll, seen no real big concerns. Does anyone like, would anyone like to speak to this? John?
Well, I, I should just say I'm sympathetic to the request. I think that there's been quite good progress made so far, and I understand the, some of the difficulties posed by the recent pandemic problems. So I, I propose to vote to approve this.
Great. And I'll just add that, you know, I, I agree that staff, the staff memo shows the applicants demonstrated reasonable diligence and good cause. And I agree with that there's no, no indicators that there should be additional conditions on this. So makes sense to me. Anyone else want to speak? All right, well, since the recommended motion changed a little bit from the packet, can you put that up again, Elaine, the recommended motion? And maybe I can ask if there's anyone who would like to make the motion. Lupita?
I can make the motion.
Great.
I motion to approve an extension to case LUR 216-00020 for a period of 36 months from the date of this approval to August 2024.
Second.
And if I may suggest, in addition to the motion, I recommend that you add to it incorporating the staff memorandum as findings effect.
Great. Is that okay with you, Lupita?
Yes.
And Peter is the seconder?
It's great. Thank you, Alan.
So is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, we have a motion from Lupita Montoya, seconded by Peter Vitali to approve an extension to case number LUR 2016-20 for a period of 36 months from the date of this approval to August 2024, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings effect. So I'll go ahead and call on votes. Peter? Yes, Lupita?
Yes.
John? Did you say yes, John? Just basically? Yeah. And Georgie?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes on that. So we have a unanimous vote on the motion. So thank you so much. Congratulations to the applicant. Glad to see all the progress. Okay. Good. And let's see, we're, oh, yeah, we're only, I'm on a different time zone. We've only been going for 30 minutes, so we don't need to take a break. So we'll just go ahead and move on to agenda item number. Let's see, is it 5B? Sorry.
4B.
4B, thank you, Cindy. Scrolling around here. Okay, so this one is "Public Hearing and Consideration of a Site Review Application to Redevelop the Property at 3485 Stanford Court with 60 Permanently Affordable Apartments for Seniors Age 55-plus in One New Building." And it goes on to describe the unit mix, which I'll just skip over. "The proposal includes a request for an increase in maximum allowing building height to allow a height of 45 feet, 10 inches for the proposed building." And this is case number LUR 2020-00052. So again, I'll go ahead and ask the board if there are any potential conflicts of interest or ex parte that anyone would like to raise. John, did you wanna?
Yeah, again, I went around and looked around the site quite a bit, and I had a chat with some neighbors whose name I don't know, just that I happened to bump into about it. But I don't believe that there was anything that should prevent me from giving a fair and objective assessment of this project.
Okay, thank you, John. Did you want to?
Ask one follow-up question to that. John, can you consider this application without considering what you learned during that conversation that occurred outside of the hearing room today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and handle, hand this over to Charles and Sloan for a staff presentation on this.
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. So this application last appeared before the board back in June of 2020, the last summer, where the Planning Board provided valuable input on the application. Was later briefly discussed by council in July of 2020, although they ultimately didn't decide to call it off. So with that said, I'm happy to turn it over to Sloan Walbert, who served as the case manager, shall take everyone through staff's analysis tonight.
All right. Well, thank you, Charles, and good evening, everyone. So as you said, for tonight's discussion, I will be presenting a site review request for the former site of the Mount Calvary Lutheran Church. The project is required to complete site review based on the size of the property and the number of units proposed. And as Charles mentioned, a concept plan was reviewed by Planning Board last year. And the applicant is requesting a height modification, which requires a final decision by the Planning Board. So just to jump right in, public notification has been provided as required for the land use code. And outside of the formal process, And outside of the formal process, Holder Housing Partners has undergone public outreach for the project, which the applicant will cover in a minute. The nearly five acre site is located in South Holder at the terminus of Stanford Court, just north of Table Mesa Drive. The site contains two former church structures, the church congregation relocated in 2019. The northern portion of the site is heavily sloped and contains some natural open space with social trails. You can see the original church sanctuary here, which was constructed in 1957, which is proposed to remain. The applicant has applied to landmark the structure based on its historic merit, which has been included as a condition of approval. The church tradition constructed in 2001 is proposed to be demolished. The Rainbow Center daycare currently operates on the lower level of the sanctuary building and is proposed to remain. And so as I mentioned, one of the most notable aspects of the site is the topography and the natural slope to the north, which deeply drops off a ridge. It also slips to the east. However, the site is relatively level on the southwest quadrant. The comprehensive plan land use designation was most recently updated as part of the 2015 update. The designation is medium density residential, which is intended for a density of six to 14 units per acre. And these areas are generally situated near neighborhood and community shopping areas or major arterials. The site is within the residential medium two zoning district, which allows attached dwelling units at a density of up to 12.4 dwelling units per acre. This proposal is for 12.1 dwelling units per acre. The proposal includes the partial redevelopment of the site to include 60 dwelling units. That's 56 one bedroom and four two bedroom units. They will be permanently affordable for seniors age 55 and up. And the original sanctuary building would be renovated to maintain the church use and also provide new offices, meeting rooms, and some common amenity space. And the daycare would operate in compliance with its previous use review. The plan includes 59 vehicular parking spaces located in three lots. The large parking lot on the east end of the site would remain in the same general location. And a small lot is proposed on the west end of the site. The applicant has submitted a parking management plan that would describe how the parking would be managed and shared between users. And a 29% parking reduction has been requested. In addition, 32 short-term bike parking spaces and 47 long-term bike parking spaces are proposed. A 36% bike parking reduction is requested to allow for a reduction in that required long-term parking, which I'll describe in a minute. So the proposal includes the construction of a new three-story residential building on that southwest portion of the site. The building is oriented parallel to the southern property line with two wing, wings extended on either end and a covered walkway would connect to the sanctuary building. And based on the input provided a concept plan, the proposal would maintain the sweep of the existing ridge and that character of the hillside. A drive access is proposed along the south property line to provide access to that western parking area and the western portion of the building. And some screening and landscaping has been proposed to provide a buffer to the homes to the south. And an existing social path that connects to residential development to the north would be formalized. Proposed open space consists of private patios and decks and there's also shared and active areas in the form of community rooms, rooftop decks, community gardens, outdoor terraces and courtyards. There is a centralized outdoor terrace and entry courtyard between the two structures in this vicinity, which would take advantage of the expansive views. And separate open space would be provided for the daycare use in accordance with the state requirements. So as you can see in this section, the proposed structure is cut into the grade, appearing primarily as a three-story structure toward the east end and a two-story structure toward the west end. And the building does step down on both edges to two stories in height to create rooftop terraces as well. And as I mentioned, the applicant has requested a height modification, which I'll describe in more detail in a minute. There's another section showing the relationship of the proposed building to that historic sanctuary structure. In terms of building design, the proposed building is contemporary in style and designed to be compatible with that existing sanctuary. The roof is predominantly flat with some sloped shed roof elements that help to break up the mass and provide screening for rooftop mechanical equipment. Proposed materials include fiber cement siding and panels, stucco and some metal accents. Staff has identified three key issues for discussion listed in the memo. The first key issue is whether the proposal meets all applicable site review criteria. In terms of comp plan policies, the proposal is consistent with policies pertaining to desired land use patterns, community housing needs, housing choices and social equity. The project supports opportunities for a variety of housing types and is generally consistent with the neighborhood character. Further, the proposed land marking of the historic sanctuary structure would be consistent with policies on the preservation of historic and cultural resources within the city. In terms of site design, the proposal makes efficient, sensitive use of the land. It does take advantage of those developable portions of the site and the structure is cut into the grade. Also, an appropriate buffer is provided to the homes to the south. Open spaces are arranged to be accessible and functional. And the site design and infrastructure support and encourage walking, biking and other alternatives to the single occupancy vehicle. And then in terms of building design, the proposed building does appropriately reference that historic building on the site with some compatible roof forms and building materials. The second key issue is whether the height modification meets the site review criteria. And the applicant is requesting a height modification to the 35 foot height limit for the residential building. The proposed height is 45 feet, 10 inches, which is determined based on the low point of the building within 25 feet of the tallest side. The proposal is eligible for a height modification because at least 40% of the floor area of the building would be used for units that meet the requirements for permanently affordability. The height modification is necessary to achieve two objectives. First, the design of the building incorporates those pitched roofs to support architectural compatibility and also provide that screening of mechanical equipment. And then the second objective is that the measured height of the building is affected by those significant changes in grade. So this chart just shows the proportionality of what those would be. And then just for a visual representation, the gray shaded areas here on this isometric view shows the modification necessary due to the topography. And then this view includes those sloped shed roof elements that I described. So staff finds that the height of the building is in general proportion to the height of existing buildings in the general area. The shallow slope of those shed roofs would not change the perceived height of the structure, especially when viewed from the bottom of the hill. And the height of the building masses kept as low as possible. And within that 35 foot limit were feasible, which would minimize visual impacts. Also, the siding of the three, like the siding on the site of the three-story building reduces impacts to neighboring properties and also provides for some transitions down to adjacent properties. The third key issue is whether the requested vehicular and bike parking reductions meet the applicable criteria. The applicant is requesting a 29% parking reduction based on the population served, which is seniors over the age of 55. It's also based on transportation demand management strategies, the site context and access to transit and multimodal connections. So Holder Housing Partners anticipates a parking demand of approximately 0.6 spaces per unit for residents, and that's based on their similar senior housing projects within their portfolio. And given the proximity and accessibility of services and also availability of ride sharing services, there's a potential for this to be, for that demand to be even less in this case. And as I mentioned, a parking management plan has been submitted, which would help ensure that the parking needs of the daycare use would be accommodated. And based on the applicant's analysis, that combined user groups would have an estimated demand of 45 parking spaces and 59 spaces are proposed. Staff finds that the proposal does meet the criteria for a parking reduction and that the probable number of motor vehicles to be owned by residents and the needs of visitors and the needs of employees and patrons would be adequately accommodated. And in terms of bike parking, applicant has requested a 36% reduction to those long-term bike parking requirements, which would allow 47 spaces to be provided in a secure storage room on the first floor of the new structure. And applicants proposing this reduction based on the population served and on, based on their other sites, the average bike ownership is approximately 0.12 bikes per resident, which would only amount to 7.2 spaces for this project. However, they note that trends are indicating increased bicycle use among the general population and also among seniors. And based on that, they've proposed a greater amount in this case. So just to wrap up, staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the site review criteria and recommends that the board adopt the motion listed in the memo and also shown on the screen. And happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Sloan. So yes, let's open it up to board questions. Anyone have any questions on this? John?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that presentation. So just a couple of questions. The first is that when we saw this before, this was being done together with the Frazier residential community as part of their obligation in connection with their expansion. And I see now they're no longer involved. So I'm trying to understand this. How, how does this fit in with their obligation towards providing affordable housing?
That's probably a question answered either by our housing staff or by the applicant. I'm not aware of the exact details.
Is, is someone here from, who can?
We've got Michelle Allen from Housing.
Okay, yeah, since we're in on this subject, Michelle, would you like to weigh in? And I see Ian is also here.
Yeah, I'm not seeing myself on the feed, but maybe you're seeing me. I'm not quite sure. As long as you can hear me, it's fine. Yeah, so Frazier Meadows donated the land. And they were originally part owner of the land, but then BHP basically took over the project. So once the land was donated to the city, then Frazier was done with their requirement. And then it was up to the city to work with a partner. And so we worked with BHP to take a project forward on that land that they donated.
I see. So, so Frazier, this completes their obligation for affordable housing and they're no longer involved with this at all.
They were no longer involved once they donated the land. So this was our first IH outcome where somebody donated land to satisfy their IH. All they had to do is donate the land and then they were done. And then the city basically then designated BHP as a partner to develop the project. So this wasn't off-site units, it was a land donation. And John, this is the only one we've ever done. So it is a bit of a outlier.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation. I'm, I'm trying to understand how the city determined that that, that was sufficient for them to, to satisfy their obligation. Was, was that a thing from the beginning or, or?
Yeah, it was a calculation based on, you know, we, we, there, there are rules around donating land and it has to be able to be zoned residential and of a certain size. And then it's compared essentially, in a sense, to the cash and loo. So you know, if they donate land, that's, that's of equal or greater value to the cash and loo than that satisfies the inclusionary requirement. And so that's what they did.
Well, go ahead.
No, no, I'm happy to send you the, because it is such a rare thing. But like I said, we've only ever had the one land donation. Happy to send you the, the paragraph on land donations that might be of interest to you.
Okay, I'd be interested because I'm wondering if something similar is, is likely to happen with the obligation of the Mapleton 311 folks dealing with the free house property that is also intended for senior affordable housing. It sounds like a potentially a similar situation. Do I understand that correctly?
Um, through house has to, I mean, sorry, 311 Mapleton has chosen at this time to simply pay cash and loo to satisfy their requirement.
Oh. So, so they're not involved with the free house property at all anymore for affordable housing?
No, through house has approved site review with a height modification similar to the one you're considering here. And so through us is locked into 40% affordability, but it is at this point disconnected from 311 Mapleton. They've, because they've pulled about half of their building permits, they've paid about half of the cash and loo that they owe. And they have indicated that they will continue to pay cash and loo on the remaining buildings for 311 Mapleton.
Okay, well, that's very interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Michelle Sloan, this is Ian at BHP. Just wanted to jump in. Thanks for that, Michelle. But just to clarify for the record, John, so the the purchase of the land was actually not a complete donation by Frazier. So their IH funds did not cover the entire purchase price. So it was actually a joint purchase by BHP and Frazier. And we were actually co-owners up until about the end of 2019. And then at that point, BHP, we actually bought out Fraser, Frazier's interest in the property. So their IH contribution did not entirely cover the purchase of the property, but a portion of it that BHP then bought out in 2019.
Correct.
Well, thank you.
Hey, that was a question. Did you have more to follow up on, John? Go ahead.
Yeah, this, another one, maybe back to Sloan. I'm interested also in that, in that, what you call the formalization of the social path heading to the, to the north from the property going down the slope. What is its status now and how, how will it, will it be formalized?
I think primarily just in the construction and design, it will be a pressure finds path, but they will do some grading and just sort of formalize it. Right now, it's just a social trail that's been created over the years. And
Right.
It may be an easement proposed. I'd have to double check for that.
Okay, so I have two questions pertaining to that. One is to ensure, I presume that's intended for public use between the neighborhood to the north and coming through there. So will there be some sort of an easement or a legal determination that that will always be available for public use?
I'm checking right now. They're also in for subdivision. So their plat is listing all the easements and I can verify that for you. But that is the intention that it will be. Yes.
And the, so that's one question related to that path. And the other is, would it be possible for the owner, DHP, or whoever the owner of that property came to be in the future to subdivide and sell the part of the property that would be effectively open space, not, not developed? Or are they, is there something that would prevent them? Or are they, is there something that would prevent them from doing that?
So that land is being used to populate their density and is included in the site review. So that wouldn't be an option. It's also largely undevelopable just due to that pretty significant slope.
I understand the slope, but I'm, as an engineer, I also understand the possibilities for for development. And so I'm, I, I'm trying to, to be sure, assure myself that that isn't a potential that we need to think about.
And now, so that land is being used to allow for those dwelling units. So like I mentioned, that it's 12.1 dwelling units per acre, including that land. So they wouldn't be able to subdivide that off and sell it. It's being used for this project.
Okay, thank you. And then later on, we, I mean, late recently, a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board sent an email to, to planning board suggesting that those paths be paved rather than as crushed fines to make it easier for residents and bikers to use both that social path and the path going down to Dover. Is that something that, that you've considered?
So the path, I believe, down to Dover is already a concrete path. The one to the north, I, I mean, I suppose it's possible. I think the engineer on the project might be able to speak a little bit more to it. I think the intent was, you know, to reduce the amount of impervious surface and sort of maintain that natural character of the hillside. So it's definitely possible.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, John. And just to tag on to John's question a little bit, are there any improvements to the east connection down to the Broadway frontage? Because that one, I know that that path seems to need a little bit of maintenance. Any, any plans in conjunction with this or nothing specific?
Yeah, I'm trying to open up the plans. I know there's some maintenance, but I don't know if there's any significant changes being proposed as part of this. Seeing any.
Okay, well, we can always see if there's any additional information when the applicant presents. Any other questions for Sloan? At this point? John?
Sorry, just to continue on the, the path question. Can, would it be clear from the conditions that staff has proposed that there would be no fence or gate installed that would prevent the public from using that social path to the north that we've been talking about?
And well, if it were covered by an access easement, that would preclude you from putting in any type of fencing.
And, and you're still looking to see if there is an access easement? Okay, I didn't, when I was looking, but maybe I was looking in the wrong place. So I'd be very interested in your, what you find.
I'm looking through the plans, all that you know. And the applicant may know off the top of their head.
Okay. Well, if we don't have any more questions, I could hand it over then to Ian Swallow. Did you want to kick us off for Boulder Housing Partners?
Yeah, that, that would be great. Let me share my screen here. Sloan, I think you need to stop sharing before I can start is what I'm getting here. All right. All right, great. Everybody seeing first slide here?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, thanks, members of planning board. Always a pleasure to be in front of you. I think we have a very exciting project to review. And John, I will definitely touch on all your questions there. Didn't want to jump in out of turn, but yeah, just wanted to start. Thanks, Sloan, the rest of city staff for helping us get here. It's, it certainly was a complex project and they invested a lot of time in making sure we have something that we're really proud of, that we can show you all here tonight. Also want to just quickly introduce our team. First off, I'm Ian Swallow with Boulder Housing Partners. I am the lead project manager for this project. I also have JV De Souza, who is the architect and Boulder local here. So great to have JV on the design of this one. And then Mark Rocheloe, who is the civil engineer with JBA, JBA civil engineer. So any technical questions, just let me know and we can get the appropriate person to answer. So as we dive in, always important, I think, to start these presentations, just with a little overview of BHP. I think, you know, this slide just want to show, I think, our mission and what the work we do, how well it aligns with so much of the comp plan. I think specifically for this project, clearly really high demand for senior housing, diversity of housing types, you know, locating our affordable housing in really transit-rich areas, which, you know, this site certainly is, is that just based on the skip running right there and all the amenities nearby. So we feel really good about how this project kind of fits into the overall planning goals for, for the city. And so we're excited to present it tonight. Another just quick thing wanted to touch on, this is senior housing we're proposing. So for us, that means 55 and older. In practice, I think, you know, most of the residents at our senior sites trend quite a bit older than that, but the, the actual restriction ends up being 55. So just wanted to share a few of the focus areas BHP has when we provide senior housing. So you know, clearly first and foremost affordability and housing stability. Most of our seniors are on a fixed income. So, you know, staple housing is obviously hugely important to their lives. Another thing we do, and this is present in all of our senior communities, is a pretty robust resident services program. So that's things like dental aid, setting people up with appointments they might need, just kind of general help navigating, navigating the world that they may find themselves in. So for Mount Cavalry specifically, that would include eco passes at no charge to the residents. So that would be for all 60 residents. Really great, just given the location here. And then the final piece, which is really focused, I think, both on, you know, community for the residents and then how our projects fit into the broader community. So senior focused, you know, we really want to stress the importance of social connections, providing places at the communities that people can gather. So that's community gardens, you know, hosting holiday events, it's hosting, you know, activities, whatever that might be. It's typically resident-driven. But something we find really important for the success of these neighborhoods. Moving a little more specific to the Mount Cavalry site, I think Sloan gave you guys a great overview of the history of the project, but I can just quickly touch on that. So we actually first started site planning for Mount Cavalry back in 2016 and 2017. At that point, the church was still operating at the site. So it's the daycare. And we were actually looking to do housing, keep the church operating, keep the daycare operating. So we went down that path for a few months before it really became clear that that was just not going to be a situation that worked for the neighborhood. It wasn't going to be a true real, real asset, I think, to any of the stakeholders in the way that we knew it, it could be. So at that point, we, we kind of paused the project, decided we would wait until, you know, circumstances changed down the road before we revisited it. That happened, as I alluded to, in 2019. So a couple of things happened there. The first being that the church actually moved out east, they found a new location. So they are completely off the site currently. And then BHP purchased Frazier's interest in the site. So we became the sole owner of the property at that point. And then, you know, we really went back to the drawing board in terms of how we could, you know, make, make this site what we're presenting here today, which we feel really good about. So through that process, you know, we did what, what I would consider a very robust engagement process with the community. So, you know, that started off in 2016 and 2017 with Sharetz. As we progressed into 2019 and last year, we had open houses, we had design workshop. We did an online survey when we were at the point last year when meeting in person wasn't really possible. So I think that's a, that's a process we're really proud of. I think you'll see a lot of the input from that process reflected in the building today. So you know, that's things like two stories on the west side. It's things like providing community gardens, it's formalizing that, that path that runs up the hillside, maintaining that hillside as, as wild as we can, as, as it kind of exists today. So we feel really good about that going forward. And then you all would have last seen this project last summer at Concept Review, which I think was, was great. We got a very positive reception at that time with some suggestions for tweaks as we moved into site review, which you'll see here. So first of that was really refining the parking, really making sure we had enough parking, but not too much parking. So I think you'll see a really thoughtful plan shown today. We worked a ton on the building design to really break up the mass, try to really respond to that existing kind of historic sanctuary structure in the roof forms and how the building steps down and what that feels like. And then working on, you know, making sure this feels like a welcoming site to the neighborhood. John, you clearly touched on, on one of the key issues, which is that, that, you know, path through the cut through that this site offers to get from Dover through over to that Table Mesa Shopping Center is really critical. So we spent a lot of time making sure that that path is going to work for folks. I can certainly speak to the Crusher Fine versus Concrete piece of it. Maybe we'll save that for the Q and A, but those were all the things we really focused on to make this site what, what you see today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to JV, our architect, who can walk you through a little bit more of the design.
Thank you.
And see you. And we go to the next slide. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can speak up just a little bit, maybe.
Okay, sure. I'll try to. Usually people tell me to speak more quietly, but this time I'll, I'll do the opposite. Okay. Thank you for having me here tonight to be part of that presentation. Because most of the board members were here last summer when we came before you for Concept Review, we thought we would focus primarily on the evolution of the design, how the process has moved forward and illustrate what we heard last year and how we've incorporated many of the board's thoughts and ideas into the design of the project. Ian, can you go back?
Yeah, hey, JV, you're a little, you sound a little echoey. I don't know if you can get closer to the computer or anything at all. I don't know if others are hearing that.
Hold on. The only thing I can do is I can put on my earbuds and that will, that should remove the echo.
Perfect.
Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, here we go. Ian, go back one more slide.
There you go.
There we go. There was a lot of discussion last year that was about the amount of parking and there was a lot, there were some specific advice and question about the upper parking lot on the west-hand side and whether that could be eliminated. In the end, we've maintained, we had to maintain the access drive along the south and a portion of an access drive along the west for the fire department. So we've opted to keep the west fire parking lot. We have made it slightly smaller. And it does serve an important role in the project for the seniors that live on the west end of the building to have all of the parking on the far eastern end of the site. It represented quite a significant amount of distance to transit between their car and their unit. So the west parking lot has remained, but in a slightly reduced scale from what it was before. We have reduced the overall number of parking spaces compared to what we showed last year. We had just over 70 last year. We're at 59 right now. In the reduction of the parking, it's allowed us to make a, a clear space for the daycare parking area, which is off on the northeast corner of the park, of the lower parking lot. And it's allowed us to reconfigure the turnaround, which was important. Previously, we were using the parking lot as the turnaround for vehicles coming into the site, which meant that senior residents coming into park, we're having to contend with all of the visiting vehicles and delivery vehicles coming in and out and having to drive through the parking lot. The reduced parking number allowed us to put together, put into place that small turning circle turnaround that's right off the east end of the sanctuary structure. Next. Ian, can we go to the next slide?
You are on it, JV.
Oh, okay. No.
One more?
One more.
There you go.
Okay, the reduction in the parking on the east end allowed us to reposition the community gardens. Originally, they were up on the far western end of the site. And they were, they were difficult for the, for the neighborhood to get to, and they were challenging for the accessibility for the residents by moving them down to the east parking lot. It's improved community access. And it's also allowed us as a result to save a stand of mature conifers that are up on the western property line that provide additional buffering and landscape screening between the single-family residential properties to the west and the west end of the new apartment structure. We did also move the apartment structure five feet farther to the north, so a little bit closer to the hillside. That opened up a planting space along the south edge of the property between the access drive and the apartments to allow additional landscape buffering between the apartment structure and the duplex structures that exist to the south of the site. This image is actually a close-up, a closer view of the entry. We've repositioned the vehicular drop-off. It used to be further to the south. We've now made it closer to the entry court so that the vehicular drop-off and the primary entrance to the community space. And now all of that vitality is incorporated into that entry court that's between the apartment structure and the sanctuary that will remain. We've also reduced the scale of the City Lights Terrace that's off to the northwest of the community space and just to the west of the sanctuary. We've made it a bit smaller. We've softened that edge of the terrace along the hillside. We've created a series of smaller scale spaces that will be more comfortable and more appropriate for small numbers of seniors to gather in and feel good about being outside. Next. Okay, this is an image now of the project, of the design of the project. This is the, the north elevation. You can see the hillside in the foreground. The hillside is left in its natural state. The path that we've been talking quite a bit about already is clearly marked as it comes up the hillside and through the transition between the sanctuary and the apartment structure. So the north elevation here, the City Lights Terrace in the foreground and the grand stair moving up to the right to the upper level of the site. Next. There was a lot of discussion about how the building addressed the sanctuary last year. And we repositioned one of the units that used to be above the community space on this northeast end of the building. That's part of why we moved the vehicular drop-off location. But by removing that unit, it allowed us to put a large sloped roof on that really references the sanctuary that's adjacent and brings the roof of the building down to a similar scale at that point where the apartment building is closest to the sanctuary. That entry roof kind of stitches through the building and reappears up above the roof and becomes a mechanical, a screen for mechanical elements and helps to connect the building to the sky. Next. We also added sloped roof elements over the third story bedroom volumes. Again, for additional mechanical screening rather than using a more traditional metal panel screen around the mechanical units on the roof. And we also took away a portion of the, of the sunset terrace that's on the west end of the building to create a second large sloped roof element. Next. So what we, what we end with is we have two large roof elements, one at the east and one at the west end that bring the building mass down to a single story at both the entry court on the east and at the edge of the hillside on the west. Next. This is a view looking to the east. The sanctuary structure is on the left-hand side of the image. It shows that large roof that comes down through the building and brings the scale of the building down to the single story. And recalls that folded roof that's really an important architectural element on the existing sanctuary. Next. Sloan mentioned that, you know, most of the slope proof elements don't significantly change the perceived height of the structure. When you're near the building, you can see the dashed white line that's drawn along there. The the slope proof elements don't actually appear to be much taller at all than that the height of the parapet that surrounds the flat roof portion. And the other thing that's important about this image, it shows how we've taken incorporated rain rain gardens into both the grand stair that ascends from the the first floor up to the upper level on the west end of the site and into the natural landscape of the hillside to improve our water quality for all of our stormwater runoff from the upper parking area of the property. Next. So again, that's the the north elevation with the city lights terrace and the grand stair in the foreground. Next. This is the entry court. So this is where residents arrive and neighborhood residents move through the site. Next. You can see we've originally last year, the the covered vehicular drop off was underneath two stories of the structure. And that's where we positioned that unit that we took off to create the sloped roof near the sanctuary building. So we've created a new lightweight, very delicate covered vehicular drop off that again is very close to the entry court and draws that energy and intensity into that space. Next. And there's the stair that is near the community space and near the entry and and rooftop pergola that connects to it kind of mark the entrance to the building. It's above the the what we call the sunrise terrace on the east end of the structure. And the the stair tower is filled with glass so that it has a lot of light in it. We're trying to encourage residents to use the stair rather than the elevator to move up and down through the building to keep them active and keep them healthy. Next. Okay, next to you. This is the approach on Stanford Court. Ian had this on the initial slide. You can see the vehicular drop off ahead. You can see the the stair tower and the pergola up above at the entrance. And beyond in the trees, you can see the sanctuary building. Next. Next slide, Ian.
Sorry, there's a little delay, JV.
Okay, no worries. This is the south elevation. There was also a lot of discussion last year about we had proposed two different architectural themes. There was a more urban character on the south side that faced the urban context. And there was a different character on the north side that faced the wild hillside. Planning board members expressed that a single architectural character might be more appropriate and expressed a substantial preference for what we had proposed on the north elevation over what we had proposed on the south elevation. So now the south elevation brings that architectural expression around to the south side of the building so that it is unified, although it is a bit different on this south elevation. If we go to the next slide, Ian. Because of the solar issues on the south side, we have deep roof eaves. We have additional kind of more densely developed sun shades and large pergolas and vertical shades over some portions of the wall to provide solar protection. And in the middle of that image, you can see the the midday rooftop terrace that we have that faces south that'll be good for use during the shoulder seasons of the year. Next. This is the view on the city lights terrace looking up the grand stair to the west. You can see the character of the terrace in the foreground with little spaces, smaller spaces, comfortable kind of street cafe type spaces for chairs, places for for residents to sit and gather. The stair ascends to the west and you can see where the the large roof, sloped roof on the west end of the building is is coming down as it approaches the the edge of the hillside. Next. And we'll we'll end with this image. This is from the bottom of the hillside, looking up the path. You can see the sanctuary on the left and the apartment building on the right. As you move away from the building, some of those slope proof elements become more visible and they help to fragment the edge of the building against the sky. So it's not a single long horizontal line. And we specifically wanted to render this image in the winter when the trees are out of leaf to show how much of the building you can see during the winter and to show that the color palette for the building is specifically derived from the winter landscape. Our intent is that the lower portion of the building be muted browns and and warm grays that pick up the colors of the of the winter landscape here in Boulder so that as the building sits atop the hill, it really looks as like an extension of the hillside up to the sky. And you really see just that darker portion of the building, the dark band of the third floor that runs across to perceive that more as a one story structure on top of an extension of the hillside beneath it. Okay, Ian, one more. And that's it for my portion. Back to you, Ian.
Great, yeah, thanks. Thanks, JV, members of planning board. That's that concludes our presentation. So thanks again for the opportunity. I think, you know, we feel like we have a really good project here that's incorporated a lot of what we heard from you all, a lot of what we heard from the neighborhood, and that's going to provide, you know, sixty units of permanently affordable housing to seniors at a time when we know how important that is, especially in Boulder. So we are here to ask for your approval and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, okay. Well, thank you, Ian and JV for that presentation. We'll go ahead and open it up to board questions for the applicant. And then we'll probably, just so people know, we'll probably take a break after the Q and A for the applicants, just a short break before we hear from the public. So anyone have questions? John?
Well, thank you. So I I think you heard my my questions to staff about the the path and so on. So I I'd be interested in your thoughts on on both the public access and other aspects of the face of that path and the other paths going to Broadway and to the south.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's a great question, John. I think that was probably the number one thing we heard during any community engagement was how important that path was. So, you know, our intent is one hundred percent that that is a public path. Folks can cut through the site, head over to King Supers on that, walk through the site. That entryway was really designed both for residents and also to be, you know, welcoming to outsiders as they move through. So on the east side, there are some improvements planned to that. It is already paved, but it's in a little bit of rough shape. So that would probably be reconcreted. It's existing concrete today. I know there's some grading work down there. I'm not sure if it would be accessible on that end, just given the slope, but could certainly find out. And then on the piece about, you know, concrete versus crusher fine, obviously, you know, certainly appreciate the the input of the of the park staff. I think, you know, our preference would really be to keep that as crusher fine. I think, you know, that was really what we heard from the neighborhood. That path is so special because it does feel wild. It feels like you're out on a hiking trail. It feels like it's a it's a shortcut and not something that's super formal and that you're on a bike path. So I, you know, I think that being said, the design intent is that it's not, it's not a hiking trail, right? It's a it's a crusher fine. It's still something that a wheelchair could navigate, even though it's not, you know, we just don't have the slope to make it ADA accessible, but it's still usable by a stroller, it's still usable by a bike. But I think we would not want to disturb that area with formwork for pouring a concrete path and all that that entails. So that would be our preference, certainly open to feedback from from the planning board on that piece. But that's.
Ian, if I could also jump in. John, I will say that there there are stormwater improvements that have to happen over on the access down to Harvard off on the east end of the site. And so the path and the connection all the way down to the sidewalk on Harvard will be rebuilt. So that's the access to the east. And we did hear from neighbors throughout all of our public community engagement on the project, how important that hillside is to the wildlife that moves through that area. And I think that that was part of their desire to have that hillside remain wild was so that the the wildlife would continue to be able to move through there. And so, you know, we would prefer to not put a paved path through there just to keep the character of the hill as wild as possible and make it as wildlife friendly as possible.
Okay, well, thank you. So just to to continue on that topic, are you willing to move ahead with a with an easement for public access through there? And so an agreement not to build fences and gates that would prevent public use of the of that path, of any of the paths, actually?
Yeah, John, I think absolutely. I think, you know, we would want to look at and just make sure there's no legal issues with an easement with other easements that that cross under there. There's a there's a lot going on at the bottom of that hill with the existing ditch and just want to be sure we we are able to grant public access over those things. But certainly our intent, yeah, would be to keep it public and and a hundred percent want to to look at that if that's the direction.
Thank you.
Hey, great. And since we're on that subject, Ian, I wasn't absolutely sure, but it sounds like bicycle traffic might be envisioned on both of the connectors or is that something that's kind of up in the air right now?
You know, as someone who has occasionally ridden my bike down to the Harvard connection on site visits, it's it is not primarily a bike route through that path. If you look at the site plan, it comes up and there is a small set of stairs and then also on the east end. So it is it's much more a walking path. That being said, if you're feeling adventurous, I think you could certainly get get a bike across it and there would be no like formal restriction to prevent you from bringing your bike through there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board right now? Georgie?
Yeah, just a quick question on the height modification. To understand it better, the the sloped roofs are currently that the that hide the mechanical equipment are currently included in that height modification. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The the way the code is written, the traditional mechanical screening that you're allowed to put on top of a building actually does not count towards your building height. So we did produce a series of elevational studies for staff that showed the impact of the slope roofs and what they would, how they would compare to a traditional mechanical screen on the roof. And in this instance, because we're proposing the roofs as a mechanical screen, they count as part of our building height. But were they just a traditional screen, they would not.
So can you share? That's that's exactly what I thought. So so can you share the delta? If if that would be a flat roof element and you did have a mechanical screen, just from my own understanding, what would be the height modification?
I believe it would be no more than a foot or two.
No more than a foot or two. So that that shed roofing, that screening mechanical is adding eight of the ten, roughly ten feet that's being requested, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, well, with that, let's go ahead since we're almost ninety minutes into the meeting and take a a five minute break and continue at eight or at seven thirty. And and then we'll start the public hearing.
I am not a second.
Yes, trying to get. I'm trying to get light on me. I'm staying in a in a place where the person who lives here doesn't really like very bright light. So sorry about the darkness. All right, I see people coming back.
Well, if we throw a tennis ball through screen and then you get it, we'll know that you're safe. Special points for that reference.
All right. Okay, well, let's see. We've got how many planning board members still waiting for Lupita? And there's Lupita. John, Georgie, okay, I think we've got all five of us. Great. Okay, so now's the time where we can hear from the public during the open public comment period for this item. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. And I, Ryan, will hold up a yellow and a red card as your time gets up. So please try to stick with the three minute timeframe. Please state your name and address or neighborhood when you start speaking. So I see one hand up at this point. Liz hands. So I see one hand up at this point, Liz Hansen. And Ryan, if you could enable Liz to unmute. And then Liz will be followed by Caitlin Ryan. Thank you for waiting, Caitlin.
Liz, you're now able to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Liz Hansen. I've lived in the Table Mesa neighborhood at 3930 Darley and on Bear Mountain Drive since 1992. I've lived in Boulder since 1982. I live a few blocks away from this project. And I I'm speaking because I really strongly support this application. I've reviewed the design. It was great to see the renderings tonight, and I think it's a really beautiful addition to the neighborhood. I have no problems with the height that's being requested. And frankly, Table Mesa really needs more diversity, both in income as well as in age. And therefore, I encourage the planning board's approval tonight. And I feel, you know, let's bring something positive and new to our neighborhood, which has had a lot of sadness this year. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Liz. All right, and let's go with Caitlin Ryan next. Caitlin, hopefully you can unmute.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
Great. So my name is Caitlin Ryan. I full disclosure, I'm a volunteer editor with the Boulder Housing Network. And I've lived in South Boulder as a renter for about 10 years now. First as a graduate student at CU and then I graduated and now do a bunch of random things, including teaching. And I just became a condo owner myself last week or last month. So really invested in this area. I live off of Bear Mountain Drive. And this is probably this is my first time speaking at planning board, but hopefully not the last. And I agree with a lot of what Liz just said. I think that this neighborhood does need some more diversity. But what I want to do in terms of speaking in support of the Stanford Court Senior Housing is to share a personal story about how essential it is to have more affordable senior housing in Boulder. So my partner's parents, who are in their 80s, were born in the Soviet Union, and they're both highly trained mathematicians. But when the Soviet Union collapsed and the local economy and collapsed along with it, they immigrated first to New York and then they had a really hard time finding work in their field. So they took tutoring and house cleaning jobs, lived very, very modestly. And when my partner found employment in Boulder, about eight years ago, they followed him. So for the first several years that they lived in Boulder, they rented an apartment downtown. The neighbors were mostly university students or young professionals. And but the rent was just not sustainable, given their pension and savings. So after about three years, they were able to move into affordable senior housing that's run through Boulder Housing Partners. They don't own or drive a car, but they can walk to several grocery stores around them. They take buses all over the city. They're fairly self sufficient, which is pretty amazing, given their given their age. But beyond their comfort and security, I can't explain probably enough what a relief it is that they can afford to live near us. Or to think of it the other way around, that we have the opportunity of living in a city that is pretty expensive and that we can also live near them. So most people do have to think about how they're going to care for their aging parents. Everyone's situation is different, and there are no easy choices. But for us, it is so comforting to know that we're just a call away. If they need anything, the kind of security and relief that is provided by their housing really extends far beyond the benefits to them alone. So that I just is it's a story about the incredible power of affordable senior housing and how it reverberates across generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. All right, and those are the only hands that I have seen up so far. Come up so far on our attendee list. Last call then for comments on the Stanford Court item. Anyone want to speak? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and and ask Ian and JV if you have any response to anything you've heard or.
No response, just just thanks to the speakers as always for their their public comment.
Great. Okay, thank you. Well, with that, then we'll we'll close the public hearing and open it up for board deliberation. There were key three ish, three key issues in our memorandum. And I could probably, yeah, why don't you go ahead and display them? So that's great. And we can talk through these one at a time. The first one, does the project meet applicable site criteria, site review criteria? And also consistency with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Just starting with a negative poll, is there anyone who has large concerns with key issue one, site review criteria and the BVCP? Would anyone like to speak to this key issue? John?
Yeah, I I think this project is nicely thought out, and it does meet the site review criteria and satisfies the BVCP objectives as well. So I I think this has done a nice job.
I I agree. I really applaud the health and approach to the hillside in a wild lens.
Great. Any other observations or comments? I will say that the BVCP does highlight affordable housing for seniors is a really huge priority for Boulder. So I think it is good to see how well this this project aligns with that that principle in the BVCP. So that's great. Lupita?
Yeah, I wish most of, if not all of our projects were the this level. Or just this easy to to accept. I I think it is meets the criteria. It has. I happen to live also in South Boulder. I think this will be a great addition for this population that grows in our community. So this would be a welcome community to this area.
Great. And Georgie?
Um, just to highlight the importance of senior housing, I I thought Caitlin's testimony was particularly poignant around, you know, sort of the ideas around a project like this and how valuable it is, not only for the people that live there, but also for the people that are connected to those people. And so I do find it consistent with a comprehensive plan and wanted to to call her out and thank her again for comments this evening.
Great. Okay, anyone else want to weigh in before we go to issue two? Okay, well, in key issue two, we are asked to weigh in on whether the height modification meets the site review criteria. And I think that there were definitely some questions that helped illuminate, you know, what the what the height modification request is. Does anyone want to raise any concerns in this area? Okay, anyone want to speak to it? Georgie?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it. I'm not I'm not particularly concerned about it. Certainly didn't hear any concerns from the community about it. I wanted to bring up the point I was bringing up before, because I think it would be helpful. I didn't necessarily see it in the packet. But understanding the difference between sort of what the mechanical screening that wouldn't fall under the height modification and what these shed roofs that are hiding it in a probably, in my opinion, a more elegant way than 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 those kind of mechanical confining type of type of fences that are normally put up. I think it's an interesting design feature. And I also think that if put in context of, you know, if these were mechanical screenings, we'd really be talking about a two foot height modification on a 10 foot one. I think it's important context for for everyone in the community when we think about height and other projects too. Because to me, this doesn't feel like a 10 foot height modification. It feels more like a two foot height modification. So, thank you.
Great. Yeah, and I'll just say that I I agree that from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, those slope roofs and make things look a lot nicer. So I would say that it's justifiable from from that perspective, as well as the fact that we have 40% affordable affordability, over 40% affordability. So anyone else want to weigh in?
I just say I concur.
Thank you, Lupita. Great. It sounds like we we have a pretty positive reaction. Okay, so do the requested vehicular and bicycle parking reductions meet the criteria in our code? John?
Well, I'll be short. I think they do. The answer, my answer is yes.
Great.
I agree.
Okay. Yep, I think it was well documented, the justifications for the reduction and the community that's being served. So I absolutely concur. So awesome. Well, we can certainly have another round or we can have one of the you know, go ahead, Georgie.
I have a comment and maybe a follow up question to staff, whether now or or some other time is the appropriate time to answer. I would be interested in sort of related to the parking and vehicle and bicycle. It would be very interesting to me, you know, call it five years from now or four years from now, when this is built out and operating, to look back at a project like this and see how successful or not successful this this was relative to bike parking and 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 vehicular parking. I don't know if we have mechanisms in the city to do that. But I think it would be informative for 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 us, because it does appear to meet all those things and but i- it's one thing to have it on paper. It's another thing to see it in practice. So just putting that out there as, you know, an idea of something that, you know, maybe we could revisit a few years after build out of a project like this.
Yeah, and I I agree. I think that there's also the Fruhauf site, which was mentioned earlier tonight, that has that really encourages car free lifestyles. And I I think that as we enter into those territories, it would be good to examine the outcomes over time. So I think that makes sense. Lovely. Any other comments before we you know, I could always ask if anyone wants to make a motion at this point? And there is a recommended motion language up there. Okay, so Lupita's hand first and then Peter may want to second. So go ahead.
Yes, I I would like to make a motion to approve the side review case number ER 2020 dash 00052. Incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached criteria checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Lupita and seconded by Peter. Discussion, John?
I I certainly agree with this. I wonder if there'd be any interest in making revising it a little bit, just to make more explicit the requirement to formalize the path and public access to the area. The, you know, the applicant has said that they intend to do so and is willing to, you know, to put an easement on that path area, assuming that there's no conflicts with other easements. And so I'm wondering if it's appropriate to include that as a condition for for this approval. So that's that's my only thought on this topic. I'd be interested in in your opinions.
Yeah. And Helen, did you have a a comment from the legal perspective on that?
Yeah, I have a question just for clarification. What paths exactly you're talking about, John? And I don't know, it might be helpful to pull up a plan again that shows the property.
Well, there there are three paths that I'm particularly interested in. One is the social path that comes from the north up the up the steep portion of the property to the to the to the buildings. One goes to the east down to Broadway. And one goes to the south. I think it's to Dover Court. And all three of those now are available, you know, the public accesses them. But I don't know that there's a a formal easement for the public to use those and and that's my concern.
Yeah, and I I don't know. I don't think there are formal easements for those right now. Just looking at at the map, would you and were you anticipating that the easement then also go through the building area?
Yes.
Infred Court?
Yeah, that it would go through the building area come out at the at the street. Stanford Court, so that people could you know, walk to King Supers from there. And the other path goes to the east, and that's on the the property of that we're talking about now. And then there's another one going to the south. I think to Dover Court. Which you know, is has generally been used, but I don't know that they're what the official legal arrangements are for them.
I'm not sure. I know where the south one is, John. Dover is the one where the north one terminates at. So I don't I don't know if it's just street sidewalks going south.
Okay, I may have misspoken. It's it's the one it goes through the you know, I think it's called Harvard Court or something of the sort like that. The apartments to the southeast of Stanford Court. Perhaps Ian can describe it more accurately than I. It's not shown on this map, but it's there is a path.
John, I think that's the that's the one on the east that goes down to down to Harbor, that the south entrance is really just the roadway that kind of dead ends into the existing parking lot. There's there's not really a path there. I think it's probably you're thinking more of that one on the far east that connects you down to Broadway and Table Mesa right there.
Okay, well, that that may be. Appreciate that, Ian.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I'd like to do is just formalize that arrangement. So in case there's some new owner sometime in the future, they they can't lock it off.
And and one of the issues I see with that is I think this path that goes through kind of the building area, I believe there may be a structure that crosses it. Generally, the city doesn't allow structures to cross easement. There are there are ways to get around that through a permit that would allow that. But it's not super easy to do. Another thing to consider would just be to put an express condition on the property to require that these pedestrian connections not be gated and fenced off and that they're open for use by residents, occupants, visitors and other pedestrians to ensure safe and convenient connections through the property and between properties connected by these connections. And that would lock it into this approval.
Well, if if that can be made a permanent arrangement, I'm 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 happy with that as long as it works.
Change it, the applicant would have to come back and get the approval amended.
So that, did you want to propose that as a friendly amendment, John, or?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'm not sure how to phrase it. Maybe Helen, maybe you can.
I think Helen had some really good language there. That.
I can read it out loud when you're ready for it.
Okay, well, I I'd like to suggest that as an amendment, a friendly amendment.
So Lupita, you get to weigh in first on whether you want to accept that amendment?
Yep, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
And Peter is the second, or I think you have to weigh in as well. Do you accept that?
Can I have Helen up here, please?
So this is what I'm proposing, the pedestrian connections.
So this is what I'm proposing. The pedestrian connections shown on the plans prepared by the applicant on June fourth, two thousand twenty-one shall not be gated or fenced off and shall be open for use by residents, occupants, visitors, and other pedestrians to ensure safe and convenient pedestrian connections through the property and between properties connected by these connections.
I accept.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion from Lupita, seconded by Peter with a friendly amendment. Is there any additional discussion before we bring this one to a vote? So, let's see, I guess since we've had a friendly amendment, are people okay with, well, I'll go ahead and restate the motion, and Helen, you can just chime in with that language one more time, and we'll make sure it gets into the record. So the motion on the table is to approve site review case number LUR twenty twenty dash fifty-two, incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached criteria checklist, findings of fact, and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum. And then the language that...
With the following additional condition, the pedestrian connections shown on the plans prepared by the applicant on June fourth, two thousand twenty-one shall not be gated or fenced off and shall be open for use by residents, occupants, visitors, and other pedestrians to ensure safe and convenient pedestrian connections through the property and between properties connected by these connections.
Great. So with that, let's go ahead and put it up for a vote. Peter?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Georgie?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So we got a unanimous vote approving this site review. Congratulations to Boulder Housing Partners and to staff for this project. We're really excited to see it go forward.
Thank you all. Always appreciate the opportunity and thanks for the thoughtful discussion. So we appreciate it.
Excellent. Okay, well, we are less than two hours from the start of our meeting time, and we have made it into the matters section of our meeting. So this may be a historically brief planning board meeting.
Very efficient.
Yes. Yeah, so, and that's nice, because I wouldn't mind having a nice night's sleep tonight. I'm sure the people would, wouldn't mind that as well. So...
Wasn't, this project was what they call a nine-year overnight success, something like that?
There you go. All right, so I'll ask the board members any matters that you'd like to bring up? John?
Yeah, two things. One, as a consequence of the discussion this evening about changes in affordable housing arrangements and obligations by various applicants. I would just like to encourage staff every once in a while to update Planning Board on changes like of the type we heard tonight. Because I think that's of great interest to our decisions in the future, and it's good for us to be aware of how things are actually going and what's actually happening. So just a comment to staff on that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention to colleagues here is that last week I wrote an email to council because I noticed that there was a difference in in how council was presented with information about the CU South property and what Planning Board had actually decided. And I think I just wanted to let you know that I had contacted the city council about that. What had, what had happened was that in some of the language, the draft language for an ordinance regarding the annexation, it indicated that Planning Board had duly approved the annexation agreement, and that wasn't the case, and I pointed that out. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay. Any other matters from the board? Okay, Charles, anything from the planning department at this point?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Okay, Helen, anything from your side? And welcome back, by the way. Okay, great. Well, with that, and then let's see, Cindy, calendar check. We've got a meeting in two weeks, is that right?
That's correct, two weeks, and it's going to be discussing the CIP.
Okay.
And another thing under matters, oh, facilities update, right? Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, the live meetings update that was sent out?
Give me one second here. I apologize. I just was looking at it, and I've already lost it. Come on. It will be the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven CIP, and also the facilities master plan update.
Great. So that'll be a good nuts and bolts meeting.
Yes, it will. And so, yeah, just in two weeks, and then hopefully we go back to every two weeks or so? Because then we have one in September, September second, and then we have a little break.
Yeah, we're going to have the second half of September off due to Young Poor, I believe. So that's, that'll be a needed breather, I think. It's been a tough schedule. So thank you to staff for that. Great. Any other, any other debriefing that the board would like to do?
I have a comment, which was, you know, I was, I really appreciated that the Velo Park discussion tonight, although it was mostly procedural, was interesting to hear about the for-sale residential, both in that case, the market rate that was in a reasonable range of four hundred to seven hundred K and the affordable housing and the first-time homeownership that those six people, or the homeownership that number of them had, the first-time homeownership that number of them had had in those six years. I bring it up because I've been thinking a lot about the opportunity zone that we're facing here in Boulder and the, what kind of complications that creates around being able to offer, for a developer to offer for-sale residential. Because the mechanisms of the opportunity zone basically create a circumstance for Boulder where a developer could not possibly offer for-sale residential because the opportunity for them is a ten-year capital gains flip where they profit dramatically through that. I bring that up only because I know we're going to be wrestling with some of those issues going forward, and it was just, the Velo Park development was such a positive thing around homeownership on both levels. And you think about sort of where we're headed as a community. I don't know, it's mostly just the commentary around and the contrast around those things for us to think about. Just putting that out there. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments before we call it a night? All right. Well, good job, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
I think Lupita needs to stay on for another six hours.
I want to, I want to, I had done my share of very late meetings. This is a nice gift. I'll take it.
Great, yeah. You look, you look nice and relaxed after a couple of meetings off, and we're glad to have you back too. So well, thanks, everybody, and I'll go ahead and call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, David, for, thanks, everyone.
Brian, for all your help tonight.
Yes, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Of course, take care.
Bye-bye.